Going on the record.
Uh, we'll start off with uh.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so.
In addition to.
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 Motion to pass.
To.
January fourteenth of two thousand twenty-five.
I second.
I second that.
On favor, sir.
Motion carries.
Um. Um, going into.
Going into open discussion.
Fight.
We've talked about.
Talked about.
Uh, uh. Vicki, Vicki, the presentation about.
About.
Donation.
Donation.
Um, um, did you?
Well, I sent. I sent you guys all of those different, um.
Fundings.
Fundings that that could come out of. I know mostly we talked about the opioid restricted funding, um, which has got almost eight thousand dollars and her request was ten thousand dollars. And so that's what I sent you, um, several different options that it could possibly come from to make up that extra two thousand dollars.
I make a motion.
I make a motion. Personally, I think.
Personally, I think it's a very important thing for our community.
Yes.
Um, we've had some tragedies in our own school system and she's been helpful with that. And I think it could be a positive app.
I, I con.
I, I confirm.
I, I like it.
I mean, they never used the OCS funds that never.
That's never.
Well.
Well, um, you know, they requested them last year, uh. What was, uh, Project Hope requested them last year. And I spoke to them on several occasions stating that I needed paperwork showing that's what they requested. Also had to have their federal tax ID number and all that stuff or state requirement. And they never responded back. So that money stayed there. It never got paid out of them. And I did, when I did reach out to Vicki after the last point, um, she did say that, um, they have a teen and young adult and adults that is in, uh, program that is specific to overdoses. So they would definitely qualify for our opioid restricted funds.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion. I need it, need it.
I second that.
I second that.
On favor, sir.
On favor, sir.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Three, two.
Three.
Are you, you guys are gonna do, wanna do the whole ten thousand?
That would be my.
That would be my.
I would be five if we were going to the term of two thousand, two thousand.
Yeah.
From the email. I, I'd have to. I'd, I'd have to go back.
Kim and Wood.
Okay.
Okay.
Remember his.
What was that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I got it.
I, yeah, I will send you guys that again tomorrow and then we can.
Well.
Well, if.
I, I've got it. I can, I can tell on the agent which they did not request funding last year.
We budgeted that. There's two thousand dollars there. We have a regular donation fund that is nine hundred dollars. On that, sometimes we would help the library with their summer reading program, but I don't think they requested that last year either. And then of course, we have the.
Funding that.
Funding that for the economic development, which is, there's a balance of seventy-five hundred dollars on that.
I'd say do.
I'd say do the.
What, seventy-eight, nineteen, thirteen.
No, 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 no.
Mm-hmm.
Just approve. And then.
And then.
Counsel, counsel agent. I would say that would give us a few thousand.
I'm playing.
Pretty close.
You wanna venge your.
You wanna venge your.
I make a.
I make a.
I make a motion.
I make a motion to.
Provide distance by seven thousand.
Seven value.
Ten, ninety dollars.
For opioid, opioid fund.
And.
Two thousand dollars.
Two thousand dollars.
So.
And then a hundred and eight just gonna come out of the donation, that fund.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
On favor, sir.
On favor, sir.
Aye.
Moving on to.
Moving on to.
The majority.
Propose.
Will you guys ask Alex to make a, a. Change in that.
Change in that. So this is the new one, um, so whatever you wanted to.
Change was.
Change is number, number of security.
Security.
Um, um.
I don't remember exactly what that.
Yeah, it was, um.
Section.
Section.
Number six.
Number six.
I, I don't know.
Yeah.
And.
And change, change. Did you look that one down?
I did, yeah, I did. Yeah, that's a lot of red line. So, yeah, that, yeah, that was a lot better.
Um, member of discussion.
We're just saying.
We're just saying more than I thought, but I think maybe it was.
Correct.
Correct.
To get the, get it, get the number up and right.
Right. Uh, this is.
Uh, this is wrong.
We've been around that branch.
Uh, it's grant funds, managed grant funds.
Grant funds.
The site owner.
The site owner.
The, 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 uh, security.
Security magnets.
Um, um. So, um, this is moving on.
Moving on.
To.
For.
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 It's currently, currently on hold, hold.
I think it's.
I think.
I think.
I think.
They're saying, they're saying, they're saying they're explaining the grant funding.
Fund.
They're coming back after, after, um, a few months.
I just wanna make sure.
I just wanna make sure.
ourselves into something dragged up.
Or something.
Six, eight. Not that I agree.
Not that I agree with.
So, uh, if all this stuff.
All this stuff is continuing to move forward.
I'll see what also it costs me.
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
As well as I.
As well as I am. I, I'm still thinking.
I'm still thinking. There's still a lot, there's still a lot of electricity here, but I hear that something, that something that.
That pulls people.
Pulls people to town.
Off thirty.
Off thirty.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
Yeah, I'm not opposed.
I'm not opposed to voters and just don't wanna sign off on such a percent.
Especially, especially what.
Do you wanna reach out, will you, then on hold, on hold?
No, I'm, I'm.
You can tell me that we're not gonna actually.
Locked.
Locked into it.
I mean, I think we, I think we need to say, some site, some more site.
More site development. Those are motion.
Motion.
On table.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to proceed.
With.
With.
Starting the process.
Looking at that.
At that.
Electric cable station.
I'll second.
Process.
On favor, sir.
On favor, sir.
Aye.
Passes.
Passes.
Uh, moving on to.
Moving on to.
This matches.
Matches.
Say.
Voice.
Always be.
Request.
Request.
You can not have.
Because I have, I spoke to you too.
They reached out.
They reached out and Kim and I both.
Want to know.
Did he say March first?
March first.
March first.
March, one to know if they could use the.
The.
Center for.
Kind of a.
Kind of a.
Camp, not a camp.
Not a camp.
Sort of a camp.
An all-night.
It was void.
Um.
March first.
March first can be.
In the March second.
In the March second, obviously.
Um, um.
What I talked.
What I talked to them about.
New agreement.
Three months.
Three months.
Three days.
Um, instead of funds.
Funds.
Cause they would actually do.
Actually do like a town peanut day.
In lieu of funds.
In lieu of funds.
Be able to use.
Be able to use.
The.
Very bad time.
I think that's.
I think.
It's, it's encouraging.
Encouraging.
Have some.
Some.
Do it to the community.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
I guess.
It's, it's.
It's.
Things.
Pursuing.
They have.
They have to invest in it.
But.
But so I make a.
No, I make a.
Allow them to.
Allow them to.
With, uh, with humanity, um, work, work.
Um.
To work that off.
To work that off.
I will second that.
I will second that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much care. Now, economic, economic.
No, this is.
No, this is Jonas.
Jonas. Thing.
Thing.
Oh, oh.
One more, one more solid.
This is. Kim, I'm sorry.
What's this?
It's the one with.
It's the one with Sean.
And then.
Oh, oh. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Um, um, this is.
This is the.
What we just talked about.
Or talked about.
This is what we.
This is what we talked to Sean about.
About.
Public meeting about.
About working nasty, about trying to look here in the.
Other.
Other.
Union.
Union.
Brother town.
Brother town.
Um, they already, they already.
You guys happy?
Just have a bunch of work.
Okay.
For itself.
Did you look, did you look down?
I did. Yeah, I did.
Yeah.
Responded on.
Do you have no issue?
Do you have no doubt?
Well, I mean.
Well, I mean, it wasn't really an issue. I guess I, I just asked. I just asked about the free, the free system we have, we have.
Just making, making.
I don't know.
Wanting them, wanting them glued on there, not when they're, maybe they're.
I don't think.
Could have something in there saying it's not.
I don't think.
I don't think it needs to.
I mean, not how.
I don't think.
I don't think.
I don't think.
No, I just.
No, I just, sorry, I can't remember which one.
Was. So.
This is the agreement that we're discussing, have that been moved?
Redeveloped.
Development.
Development.
Yeah, this is.
Yeah, this is, this is the re one, the one that they sent back.
Second, second pass.
Mm-hmm.
This is why I just.
This is why I just.
Early morning today.
After you.
After you requested the, oh, yeah, after you guys requested the changes.
Comments?
Comment?
Well, I think.
Well, I think it's a.
Very good.
Very good talker.
Person.
Benefit.
Benefit from that.
And meeting.
And meeting with him, he seemed to be quite knowledgeable about how he helped the community.
Uh, move forward.
Move forward, listen.
Various options.
Various options.
You know, ask.
Ask.
Exposed.
You know.
So Eli.
Eli.
Sorry.
I think of others.
Don't trade it up.
Yeah, he has avenues.
Has avenues that.
Could.
Significant. Significant help.
Yeah.
Is there a motion on table?
I can't.
I can't.
Oh, I'll make a motion.
Oh, I'll make a motion that we, uh.
Accept that.
Accept that economic development agreement.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
On favor, sir.
On favor, sir.
Aye.
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 You have to sign.
You have to sign on that.
Thank you, Kim.
Uh, report.
The.
The.
Uh, approval of claims seventy-one sixty-one to seventy-two twenty-one, two hundred fifty-nine thousand ninety-two dollars and eighty-five cents.
I make a motion to approve claims seventy-one sixty-one through seventy-two twenty-one for two hundred fifty-nine thousand ninety-two dollars and eighty-five cents.
I'll second that.
Second that.
All favor.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I have a.
I have a request for pay application number nineteen on the water plant from Crosby Construction, one hundred eighty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
On pay, on pay.
Number.
Number.
Construction.
For.
Hundred thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
That just.
That just then will leave the retainage on there at twenty-five hundred dollars. So basically, um.
It's completely.
It's completely, uh.
Finished?
Finished.
On that aspect.
We do have money left over and that will all be coming forward on, uh, some hydrant replacements and things like that that will. Cause if you do the SRF loan, you have to spend it all unfortunately. So, um, that will be coming up here in the near future. Showing you guys what they're thinking on doing that. But we've got so many old bourbon fire hydrants in town that don't work. So that is what, um, I think in meeting back and forth, what we feel that would be in the best interest to switch some of those out. So that'll be coming up here pretty soon.
I did wanna share with you guys, um. I was pretty nice, but, um, you know, a new year brings new leadership, federal government wise, state government wise. And I know that, you know, it's all been in the years, some of the changes in the federal government and programs that have been being put on hold that could affect with us for housing. But one of the big ones that Governor Braun is trying to do is Senate Bill number one. And that is to cut property taxes in the state of Indiana, which I know personally, we all would love to pay lower property taxes. But as you can see on the front page there, I kinda highlighted the impact that is going to make to, um. Our town.
Our town.
Or over the next three fiscal years. So, I mean. Calendar year twenty-two, twenty-six, we're already down, uh, we would be down, what is it? A hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
And unfortunately, that would be an employee or an employee and a half that possibly we would have to, um.
Not, not utilize anymore.
And of course, you can see the township, the, the impact on the school and also our library and the tip district also. I, I highlighted that for you too, so that the redevelopment corporation, um.
Would maybe kind of know.
I know the League of Clerk Treasures in the state of Indiana has been bombarding our state senators, um, and telling them the impact that it's gonna make on our communities. I did hear this evening that it is passed through on the first reading, um, so it might take all of you guys also. Reaching out to our senators and, um, representatives to let them know what kind of an impact it's gonna make on.
Not only.
Not only the small communities, but it will impact us a lot more than some of the bigger, bigger cities in town, in town. So.
And you know, it also is gonna affect the township. So we share those expenses with fire departments and, um, so. There's a lot of that there. I know.
I know, um, the big thing with the fire departments, was you gonna speak on that?
Um.
That didn't pass.
That did not.
That did not, they rescinded that. So that did not pass, um, and thank goodness for that.
That was.
That was.
When my fire department, our department before, before, been injected. Yeah.
Yeah.
Because, because of that house, that house though, the, the.
EMA.
EMA director.
Our county, county.
We would have been.
We would have been.
Ex named.
For township.
For township.
Response.
And all the county, all the county department would have been.
Ex named for response.
For response.
So, you know.
EMA director would have been one day.
Oh, hey.
Oh, hey.
We'll send this department.
Department.
Say they did away with us.
With us.
Since we're.
So it's a little weird.
So it's a little weird.
So, so town, town half, one half, one.
That's gonna be expected as bad.
It was the, it would be.
Township.
The.
Card.
County.
Town being under county.
Troll.
That.
That.
It was the township side.
Township side.
So if there was a fire.
Fire.
Township. This would have been us.
This would have been us.
And.
And then may director would have been.
Would have been.
Oh, hey.
Oh, hey.
I'm, I'm white helmet now.
White helmet now.
We're gonna send.
Plen.
Send.
If it's clear.
If it's clear.
Breaman.
By Breaman.
And he wanted to send, he wanted to send.
Plen.
They would have waited.
They would have waited.
Half hour.
It was.
And it also, it also, uh, mixed some of the, uh.
Requirements.
Requirements on the schooling and all that stuff for the chiefs and all that. Wasn't that all in the same?
That one, OSHA one.
Oh, that's the OSHA one.
That one bills in the works.
In the works.
That one there.
That one there is.
And that's a whole, that's a whole different bill number for that number. That's where, that's where the fire chief.
Fire chief.
Has to take fire off.
Take fire off.
Two, one, three.
Fire one.
Fire one.
Certified.
And we had, have to have our, how, how, every year, every year on top of.
On top of.
Like, 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 certified.
Certified.
I am certified.
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 Where we have, where we have a resume here every two years and then we're training, we're training on top of us.
Yeah, which makes it too many.
Very hard for our volunteer fire departments to do that. So, you know, I guess we'll kinda wait and see where, where this is gonna go. This could have a real big impact on us, on us, um, since, you know, we're basically landlocked anyway. And so our property tax revenue at the moment is not going to grow very well. But this could, this could make a big, a big difference. I think somebody's looking for votes so that they could be governor for eight years. So.
Whatever.
Whatever.
That's just my opinion. So. And then.
And then.
I, I must support you a hundred percent. Look, this.
Senate Bill one.
Senate Bill one.
This afternoon.
This afternoon. They didn't pass out a committee, but they made it, uh, amendment to it. And he's not getting it.
He had.
He had.
Ever since the.
Ever since the warning.
So they're gonna have to.
So they're gonna have to redo the, uh, impact, financial impact statement.
Okay.
So maybe.
Yeah, so, so it, it's, it's still gonna affect the local government, but not to the effect of that first report, report.
In the mouth.
In the mouth.
I also.
I also put in there, along, if you go through there, there's, these are some of the other house bills.
And one of them affects annexations in your town. They also wanna move all the municipal elections to the presidential years. Um, so there's a whole bunch of things, imminent domain, all these things that are gonna affect towns. That is all coming up. And so I'm sure if you guys read your aim, legislation, things that they send out, those are all the big things that, uh. Are coming.
Are coming forth to the communities in Indiana at the moment.
Also, I have to give a shout out to Stephen Ray. They changed the lights in the council rooms. You can finally see and there's not ten million bugs in us. So, uh, yeah, they look a lot better.
We.
We.
They're all.
They. Now we need to switch some of them on the PD side, right, Bill? That's all I got.
That's all I got.
Thanks, Kim.
Thanks, Kim.
Yes.
Chief, pardon, please, pardon.
You have my, you have my, my report. And that's all.
That's all.
Um, um, I know I've, I know I've.
Any questions?
Any questions on the monthly?
Report.
Um, I know that there was a.
But the, but the.[1310.92]
Um, I know that there was a, but the ordinance violation.
Do we need to change anything?
We don't have time to do that.
I, I. They are gonna, they are gonna. Alex is the guy. Alex is the guy with chief. And chief on that. And talk to chief. He could be helping in presenting something to us that look at days and days in the, in the violations. If there's any, if there's any. So that's next, so that's next.
Did I just ask what, what prompted that?
Here, here.
No question.
Um, we, we didn't, didn't, there's, there's.
Questions on.
Well, the, well, the issue on in the hearing, in the hearing, uh, Florida, and the ordinance, ordinance. Five day, five day chance, chance to correct the violation. So in our nuisance statute, there's a five day period, period, raising for chief for the opportunity. With right, with right to be told, to be told that this is a violation, you can correct it in the next five days.
And she did receive a certified letter.
We, 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 we present all that to the judge. At the hearing, officer police call, he had actually waited five days. And so the judge did not think that we presented officially that she said, she was given that.
So basically, we really might as well not do anything with these ordinance violations. Because we do, when we send out the letter, they don't get it certified or a ticket until after the five days has, has went past. So Ray didn't ask for the letter that was sent out?
No, no.
I don't know. We could have received it. That did the next.
Thanks, Bobby.
Yeah, the letter would have been helpful, um, um, in fairness, in fairness, officer police. It's one of those, it's one of those where you didn't pick, didn't pick just nothing. What was the bad sort of thing? Um, um, you know, I guess my personal, I guess my personal opinion might as well, it might just be a matter of simply, simply some type of, some type of written notice. You also provide just saying, you have X amount of time to correct this. You know, when they write, when they write the ordinance violation, that was, that was no question about that. They gotta, they gotta provide that violation.
So in all of them, that they can't make contact with the people. And we send it certified, which costs ten dollars in mail certified. And the people don't ever sign for them and they get returned back to us. Those are not ever gonna hold up in court. So what's the purpose, I guess on my aspect, I bet in my office, doing all the work on that, what's the purpose of sending that out?
Well, I think what I'm saying, I prefer, I prefer to be the handle of every certain office. Cause they're gonna be the ones that testify. Yeah, I gave it to them. And this written notice specifically tells they have, they have five days to correct it. I placed it there at the residence.
Can they, can they just deliver it? Deliver it whether it's anybody there or not?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I think it constitutes, it constitutes note at the residence. Cause they do that. Cause they do that at the court.
Sure, sure.
Post, you're gonna post, you know, that, you know, that makes actual, this is a congress, that constitutes, that constitutes notes.
Right.
Does that answer your question?
Not really, that's, to me, it's, it's all of, you know, I hate to say, but all the tickets that we have submitted and that they've even went to court, we've not collected money on them. We spend a lot of money in court costs, nothing against you, Alex, but, and we don't, we don't recoup any of it. So to me, it's kind of a.
If you don't do something. You don't do something, you can't just let it run wild.
But you know what, but you do, you do have the people that will come in here and pay for it right away. And they're obeying the law and then all the other ones who just let it ride. And it even goes to court and they're not making the payments on it. So nothing happens at that aspect of it, so, I mean.
Change your structure. Structure. Structure of the statute.
Change, Kim.
Change, Kim.
Adapted.
Adapted, overcome.
Okay, Les.
I mean, we, we could all probably do some. We can, we can all try to, at this point, at this point, that's what we need to, we need to learn from it, learn the situation. Play hard, play hard, ready, adjust, adjust, be the right, be the right.
I mean, the whole, this is why we sent certified mail, earlier in, he was talking about. You sent some, you sent some to the fourth and it took months? Months? I mean, we can't guarantee when regular mail was gonna get there. So that's why we sent the certified mail. Except the ones that go aside for. I mean, I, I watch for them. Watch for them.
So it's. So it's okay. And then Alex, you know, Alex, you know, that's, that's, that's. Just have to have this.
I would do both, I'd offer the, offer the. And do certified.
I mean, more notice, more notice, never, but I do understand, but I do understand Kim's point.
He's a client.
He's a client. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's an extra step, I mean, I mean, I think, I mean, I think the officer serving it, serving it to the most sense. Personally, personally.
That's exactly, that's exactly like a process.
That would be my.
That would be my choice.
Choice. If that would be agreeable with chief.
I mean, you, tap into someone at the door. That's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking, right?
Yeah, we, and if we, and if we need to, you know, I mean, if it goes to court, it goes to court. We can, we can, we can, we can have, when it all happens, we'll sign out any, any, that was place, place at that residence.
Is that something that should be done along with the posting of it?
It needs to be done, I mean.
To document.
To document.
I guess if we're, if we're being, like, if it's possible, it can be, this kind of situation doesn't happen, yes.
Well, would that be something, chief, that they could just log it?
That it was served?
That it was served?
I think you're gonna want, I think you're gonna want that. Cause otherwise, you're gonna, otherwise, you're gonna have, they're gonna say, they're gonna say, I don't know.
Oh, no, I didn't mean, I meant when the officer serves it. Can they log it on the log?
So it's documented that it was served.
I think that's what we need to do, documentation, yeah. And still posting.
And still posting. You have, you have, I mean, I mean, I can print out. I can print out, like if I, like if I served one, I could put it, print that out. Print that out, we can have that for more, um.
That's what I mean, some.
That's what I mean, some extra documentation to prove.
That is a place.
That is a place law.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That we'd have, that we could go back and say, hey. You know, officer Martin posted this such and such day. And maybe already.
And maybe already do that, Bill.
Okay.
But we don't, we don't, we don't leave, we don't leave them posted on.
Which is.
Which is, according to what I'm understanding, Alex suggests that be a possibility of doing.
Well, yeah, that's, well, yeah, that's, I mean, that's kind of my, my thinking, my thinking, get around, why didn't know, why didn't know I had five days, five days.
Correct, correct.
Cause that was the issue.
Yeah.
She's claiming, she's claiming, I didn't know, I didn't know I had five days to correct it, I was never five.
Well, I just think.
I just think.
Yeah, I, I just think.
I just think the more thorough, the better off it would be.
You have to go for it.
Like, like.
If that's not a big.
If that's not a big deal.
In the logging.
In the logging or replacement.
Okay, okay.
I'm moving on. I'm moving on. Yeah, the activity reports. And I've received this, 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 Bell Tower, Bell Tower, and, and engineering, engineering recommendations for that. And for that, I'm, 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 I'm. A plus problem, plus problem, you want to. Yeah, yeah, that and, and I looked through, I looked through the engineering firm, went through. I think with the engineering for. For the contract, they did their, they did so.
Now, everything. Everything right here in the round, we're gonna round those holes.
Yeah. Yeah. Basically, Steve was going on and one said they were gonna inspect on replacement. There's a couple of discrepancies that each one of them used a lot of.
So we're on the topic, I guess. The two main issues. Waited the bell. Seven. Sorry. Um, recently.
It's a slight.
It's a slight.
It's a slight. It's a slight.
Since we find the gap fixed, we have, we have old school people still pushed it back. So we go. Using that while, because they get stuck, the control box got wet one day. Siren came on Saturday morning, forty thirty, forty seven. Had, had, I think, mechanic trying to check it, tried to look at it, fixed it. The other thing is, you run it during daytime hours, not at night. So. So. We rarely run it. We're fine, we're fine, we're using four spark plugs. And, and, but yeah, we still, we still use up. Still going to go there. So, so we decided to replace it. Upgrade it to some lower, less heavy. The siren? The siren? Yeah. I mean, I mean, for me, for me, it's your, it's your. Building. I understand, I understand. We have enough, we have, we have, we have to bring up the guys. Because, because that's some old guy, wasn't like people that like old school, which is cool.
I get that, I get that, weight, weight, all of the, all of the issues.
Yeah, yeah, uh, I'll bring that, I'll bring that up and step out of the whole step there. What do you do, any decision on that? Decision on that? Or another location? Yeah. Work down, work down.
Stand, just stand. The bell, the bells, and you, you also, you also, then one says, one says, you should move. What do you do when you're moved, when you remove it? You don't move it. That's the other question.
Cam's door.
Send it out, buddy. Send it out, buddy. Somebody's not, somebody's not gonna steal it, that's for sure.
We have that, we have that, you know, you're managing, you're managing somewhere, you know, you could give something like this up. Put it down there somewhere, there's the possibility also, or, you know, somewhere, somewhere, display it somewhere.
Display it somewhere.
But, you know, again, where, again, some questions.
I don't know, I don't know, I looked through, Roger looked through, to me, there's a discrepancy between both of the companies. Um, of what they're thinking is, and, yeah, you know, if you look at some of the engineering reports and they said that, um, the main supports are rotted. Putting metal around them is just. Keep them from rotting any further, but they're still rotted. So, some of them doesn't say anything about replacing all of it.
It's really vague.
It's really vague, if you read, if you read through all three of them.
They're not.
They're not, it's definitely not apples for apples, that's for sure.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna details, but, but, but get that, their option. Think about it, think about it. My concern is.
Yeah, I don't think.
No, I don't think.
If there's another option, even there, even if we have anybody, anybody, steel structure. Through the, the, the. There's other options, other options that we gotta look at. Possibly. If not, then we can make it a soon next month, but I don't think even, I don't think we can do it in the next thirty days. I think it's soon, so. Right now, I, right now, I have a big, I'm having a suggestion, suggestion.
I will second, I will text them that.
Moving on. Moving on.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here. So, so our call runs. Last one's meeting with you guys. Eight calls, it's one mutual aid. One mutual aid agreement, two signal nines. Two signal nines. Three ten fifties. Three ten fifties. One clarifier. One clarifier and one medical.
And if you get mail, email that the county contract, contract.
Talk to money, what? Talk to money, who got?
The ten thousand. The ten thousand county.
Fifty thousand, we, we got that a long time ago.
I did that. I did that. Back, back, contract.
Today?
Today? Uh-uh.
I didn't see that.
I didn't see that.
As I say, we.
As I say, we signed the original one. Now they've got another one?
You handed it?
You handed it in. Yeah, so, I don't know, cause I gave that to you, you handed it to him, you said this.
That's okay.
That's okay, I'll look to see, maybe I have it now, I don't know.
It wasn't earlier.
It wasn't earlier today, but.
That was, that was.
Yeah, they're gonna pay. They're gonna directly, yeah.
We haven't received.
We haven't received the invoices either, uh-uh.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
I don't know when the invoice is coming, I can reach out to them, but, um, I'll, I'll get ahold of Angie tomorrow. No, we've received the goods. We received all of our air packs, what, here about it, we can have two weeks ago, right? But we haven't been invoiced for them yet. And they are supposed to invoice the county for the fifty thousand. And then the town and the township will split the other part of that. But I'll, I'll call Angie tomorrow.
One, a couple of other things. Couple of other things, so, so that way you don't get, that way you don't get, when your phone, when yours, your phone calls up here asking, asking, we're sending logistics and letters out.